Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council meeting and study session for July the 8th. Our council is here with the exception of Councilmember Duff, who I think might be joining us on the telephone. Jen, are you with us on the phone? Maybe not yet, but I think her plan is to join us, so we'll see if she joins us during this study session or maybe just upstairs. The first item on the agenda for today's meeting is to review the items on the agenda for tonight's council meeting. So, council, if you'd please refer to that document. Currently, we have one item off the consent agenda, and that's a public hearing regarding an annexation. But is there anything else on the agenda, council, that you would like a presentation on or any additional information or to move off of the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing...
Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman.
Yeah, I'm going to invite our fire department up here. I talked to Chief Camelli about 4F. If maybe one of the chiefs can come up, if Chief Camelli's being... I think Chief Hayes, you got this dialed in? Anyway, just to... I find this very interesting how our paramedics in our fire department currently... If you use medicines, you have to go to the hospital to resupply, so they're doing a whole new change to that with this vendoring. And so, I kind of discussed the purchase points on this, the costs, and maybe Chief Hayes could brief council on how this is going to be done.
Certainly, yes. Thank you, Vice Mayor Freeman. This is an opportunity...
She said that with love, too.
I did. I love surprises. I see why Chief wanted one of us here. So, this is an opportunity for us to kind of streamline our purchasing process. We've worked pretty closely with our purchasing department to come up with an innovative way to be able to streamline the purchases of a lot of medication as well as a lot of soft goods, as you can imagine. For a department our size, with the call volume that we have, we purchase quite a bit of medical soft goods. This vendor that we're proposing to move forward actually gives us the capacity to do a... For lack of a better word, it's a vending machine that helps us to restock our medications out of several centrally located stations that will keep our trucks in service and available for calls versus having to follow up to the hospital to get our medication restock, as well as simplifying the process of purchasing a lot of different types of soft goods and with multiple vendors. This streamlines the process to a single vendor for a lot of those previously purchased items through multiple vendors.
Does this help you track your pharmaceuticals you use as well?
It does. It gives us a much greater accountability of our pharmaceuticals. As you can imagine, for a fire department our size, we do give a lot of pharmaceutical medication on calls, and this process will have us... Give us a lot more accountability. It will make sure that we have a lot less waste, which is important when you're talking about the cost, the price, the cost that some of these medications impact our budget at.
Good. That's all I had. I just wanted to be in, having been there and done that. I find that very rewarding to save money on that end, if not wasting the medicines that we... Being expired like that.
Yeah, exactly. Previously, we purchased medications from every hospital in, you know, across the city, which made it very difficult for us to track in single items, and this gives us accountability in a single site.
Thank you.
Very exciting. Thanks.
Great. Mr. Brady?
We'd like to just bring council up to date on a few items. Most recently, in the discussions on item 5D, the union, there's just... There were some discussions we... Following our briefing with council last week, yeah, last week, and so we just... Bill and JD just want to bring you up to speed on the latest, what's included in the agreement that you're approving tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. JD and I just wanted to mention a couple of things that were reflected in the council report and make you aware of the few final changes in the negotiations late in the day on Wednesday of last week. So, in the development agreement, we wanted to fill in a blank. We received a value at the last minute for Phase C utility relocation reimbursement cap of $1.2 million. That sort of matches up with Phase A, so total is a 2.4, and the only other thing we added is we're allowing them to carry forward anything unused from Phase A to Phase C under utility relocation. Second item in the development agreement, in ground and parking garage lease, the total public parking spaces on the west garage on the ground floor has been clarified to be an estimated 430 spaces. A couple of different numbers were kicked around, but 430 is the actual number that we have out there. Third item is under the ground and parking garage lease. The ground lease structure is at a 6.25% rate based on a city appraisal. The rate will be adjusted every 10 years based on a reappraisal with a maximum corresponding base rent increase of 10%. Now, that's different compared to the purchase side. So, this is just on the lease on the west garage parcel, okay? Purchase side is still at 5%. That hasn't changed. And this really came about after discussions with our outside legal counsel, talking with the developer. These terms are actually much more reflective of current market conditions as well.
Can we go back to the purchase? Let's just clarify, because I think I saw David squirming over there. So, the idea on the purchase is there's a CPI. What is... And every... Explain that, and then a reappraisal, how often?
Okay, sure. So, the CPI increase is annual, and it's between 3% and 5%. And so, that's benchmarked off Consumer Price Index, but minimum of 3% and 5%, or max of 5%. And then, the reappraisal is every five years on the purchase.
Okay. And then, in response to the Cubs' concerns regarding parking, the developer has agreed, this is actually reflected in the document, that they must commence and complete construction during the 11 months between spring training seasons. And I think that's a major step forward for us, so there will be no construction of the west garage during spring training. The garage will still be built in two phases, but there will be no construction during spring training. So, that should help. This really eliminates any stress on the parking for the Cubs. And at all times, the developer will be in compliance with the Cubs' agreement or the facility use agreement as we know it. So, that's really a summary of the changes that we made.
Bill, reading on page 2, what's the city's responsibility to maintain the parking spaces for the Cubs? We have a responsibility. I met with you, 2,500 parking spaces? To provide 2,500 parking spaces.
So, the facility use agreement requires 2,500 spaces west of a line of Riverview, basically. Includes the existing paved parking next to the water treatment facility. We will maintain that at all times during the entire length of the agreement. There are phases, so we have to work. There will be an annual parking plan that is submitted by the developer. Cubs will be part of that review process to understand it. It's certainly... We don't want to disturb things on game day, but that will be important, that we maintain 2,500 spaces west of Riverview.
So, can I just, Bill, just explain, just to be very clear? So, today, if you don't count the parking spaces that are being impacted by the union, how many parking spaces do we currently... Have we currently had for the last two seasons west of the Riverview Drive?
Not counting anything involved in the development, 2,109.
And how many parking spaces are on the paved area where the west parking garage will go, where that currently is?
456.
All right. So, if you take the 2,100 that's currently parked today west of, and that's not being impacted by this development agreement, and with the agreement by the developers now, that if you imagine the paved parking that is west of, on the western edge of this development and immediately east of the city's wastewater treatment facility, that has, let's just call it 430 spaces, that will never... What we've... What the developers agreed to do is not be under construction for that parking garage at any time during the spring training season. And what that means for us is we're always going to have those 430 spaces, whether they're as they are today and surface, or whether they'll be the first floor of the parking garage. So, either way, if you take that 430 plus the 2,100 that exists today, they're not being impacted, we meet the requirements under the Cubs' agreement. We call it the facilities use agreement.
Thank you. That was my question, make sure we have adequate parking for Cubs. And then, I know there's other parking areas that will be developed as we move forward with this.
Right. Correct.
I appreciate the fact that there's going to be an annual parking plan each year, too, because this is going to be a moving target as staging areas for construction moves from one place to another and construction of one facility is completed. This is going to be occurring... This development's going to occur over the course of five, eight years, I believe, right? So, it's going to be... The parking plan one season probably isn't going to be the same parking plan as the next season. So, there's going to need to be some flexibility during the transitions, but I think the Cubs absolutely will be involved in the approval and the drafting of those parking plans each year, and people just might have to be a little flexible as far as where they're parking, they're working with the whole cams and others to make that happen.
And the developer went to great strides to actually make that an exhibit to the document. There are parking plans as best we can lay them out based on things today. As they get into actual construction and submission of documents, they'll be tweaked a little bit going forward, but you have a great depiction of those in your attachments.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Did we have Councilmember Duff join us in the interim? I'm sorry, I thought I heard...
Yes, I'm online.
Okay. Great, Jen. We're just going over the agenda for tonight. Do you have any question? We just... As you may have heard, just we're talking about the union agreement. Do you have any questions on that item or anything else on the agenda for tonight?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions on tonight's agenda? All right. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item 2A, to hear a presentation and provide direction on the proposed audit plan for fiscal year 2019 and '20. We have our city auditor with us, Jennifer Rutman.
Thank you, Mayor, council. We do this once per year. We come to you to approve an audit plan that dictates what we will be doing for the coming year, and the reason we do that is because the charter designated the council as the body that decides, along with the city manager, what it is that we do. So, all of our activities are directed by you, and we come to you once per year to get that plan approved. And so, what we'll start off with will be the... An overview of our current work in progress that are being carried into the next year, the audits that are newly planned for 2020, and then follow-up reviews from the current year that are going to be done next year, and then some of the other activities that we do. And I'm going to have Joe, just Joe Listano, our deputy city auditor, is going to talk about the audits.
First, we have our current work in progress, which is the convention center operations audit, the police jail services contract audit, the idea museum earned revenues follow-up review, and then last, the payment card data security standards PCI DSS review. Those are currently in progress. For new audits, before I jump into the new audits, I just want to talk about our risk assessment process. We have a pretty detailed process where we go through and look at various departments and activities in the city and review them, and the factors that we consider are any previous audits that are in place, any kind of risk factors we've identified related to those departments or activities, prior audit history. In addition, we will get some requests from the council as well as the city manager's office that we will take into consideration as well. So, the first... And you'll see the starred ones. Those are four carryover audits from last year that we didn't get to, so we're going to work on, carry those over to this year. So, the first is the business services purchasing and their procurement processes. And our objective with that audit is to determine whether effective controls are in place to prevent or detect errors, fraud, waste, or abuse, and ensure compliance with policies and statutes and any other applicable requirements related to the procurement process. Next is the fire and medical transportation services building. And again, we're going to look at the effective controls in place to ensure all their costs are recovered, billing services meet contract terms, and other financial risks are mitigated. Third is the employee benefits contracts in HR, and we're going to look at controls in place to ensure accuracy of compliance and that the performance expectations are being met with that contract. And then, the last carryover is the utilities metering process. We're going to look at the controls in place to ensure that meters are accurately measured and recorded for billing purposes. Then, for the new audits for this year that we're going to bring in, the first is the transient lodging tax, and this is going to be us checking to see if those TLT revenues are used in accordance with applicable laws and contractual agreements and determine whether reliable metrics are in place to measure the program's effectiveness. Then, in engineering, we're going to look at their job order contracting process and make sure they're done in accordance with established criteria and whether there are effective controls in place to detect errors, fraud, waste, or abuse. And then, we're also going to look at the engineering CIP process and make sure that their system utilization and related processes are okay and what kind of opportunities we see for improvement there. In the police safety photo program, we're going to look at the financial impact of the program and determine how those revenues are used and determine whether the established goals and objectives are being met. And our last audit is the ITD software and application management, and we're going to look at the controls in place to ensure all applications used to conduct city business are licensed, inventoried, and meet city IT security standards. Then, we're going to move on to our follow-up reviews for this year, which are what we're following up from the prior year's audits. And with the follow-up reviews, we will periodically check in with our departments to make sure that they are putting the recommendations or their responses to our recommendations in process, and they're effective in resolving the audit issue. That way, when we come in and do the review, we can kind of be pretty sure that they're actually putting the... Are implementing the new procedures. So, we have the citywide procurement card program, the arts and culture nonprofit support organization agreements, the financial services departments, Eastmark CFD, and that's more of a financial review that we're following up on. And then, the last one is the development services fees and charges.
And to talk about some of the other things that we do in addition to all those audits and follow-ups, one is a citywide cash handling review process that goes on all year long. And so, with that process, we drop in unannounced to various locations throughout the city that handle cash and ensure that they're following all of the city's procedures and processes that are designed to safeguard that cash. And this is more than just the minimal amounts of cash funds that we store at these locations. It's more about the million-dollar-plus that comes through those locations in cash from our customers, and we want to make sure that that money lands where it needs to go. And so, that's why we look at that, and it just helps us to keep in touch throughout the year. We've learned that this is a lot more effective than just a one-time deal, one and done. So, we do that. The PCI DSS annual review that Joe mentioned, that's something that we do every year, and that's also something that we can look at all year long, but it's more of a review than an audit, and so we can count that among our other activities. One of the last but not least extra activities is the fraud and ethics hotline investigations. And so, the city has a fraud and ethics hotline that is available to employees and contractors to call when they suspect any kind of wrongdoing on the part of anything involving city business. And so, they can anonymously report that. It goes through a third party that administers the hotline, and then that information is conveyed to us, whatever information we're given, and it's our job to make sure that those get adequately investigated. We partner with HR when it's necessary to do so and any other department that's necessary depending on the allegation. And then, we report those findings to city management as appropriate to resolve any issues. Lastly, would be any sort of... Anything that would fall under another category of consulting services. If a department is looking at various companies to fulfill a contract, and they want to look at viability and they want someone to look at financial statements and going concern issues and whether they have the ability to perform, we sometimes weigh in on that by doing some financial analysis. We also look at internal controls or systems that are being implemented to see whether there's any concerns going in to make sure that we close any gaps upfront, and any unscheduled audits that might come up during the year that the mayor, council, and city manager might request based on kind of unforeseen circumstances. And so, those are the things that we have planned for fiscal 2020, and if we have your approval to do that, then we'll finalize that plan. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Thompson?
I have one. I didn't even realize we were going to be doing the... Looking at JOCs, but I guess my question is more on the CMAR, because JOCs, the dollar amount typically is a lot lower than they would be for CMARs. And I think there's more opportunity on the CMAR side than on the JOC side for numbers being finagled by contractors. And so, if nobody would be overly opposed, I'd rather see a new audit being done on CMAR versus JOC. I ask my personal opinion. I don't know. Chris, do you have?
Well, they're two very different animals.
Yes, they are.
So, it's a very big shift. So, the JOC is because of the frequency and those coming to council and just making sure that process is competitive, because we kind of go through a pre-approved process for a listing of contractors, and then we just have them on the list, which helps us to be very expeditious in getting work done that fit underneath that limit, as you mentioned. The CMAR process really is a process that is dictated by the state law, where we pick a contractor who comes in early on in the design process so that they can participate in helping us to identify project efficiencies and be able to help us with the project in maintaining a specific budget for it. So, I don't know... We could have that discussion. I don't know what the role of the auditor would be on that entire... As a process, I mean, there's CMAR projects. I mean, they're large... Usually, they're very large typical projects. Like today, you just approved... Or, well, sorry, I get ahead of myself. You have presented for you, sorry, an opportunity to approve the contract with Core Construction, who'll be the CMAR on Station 221. I think I'm getting that number right. And their role is the contract... We already have the design team on board, but they now will come on board as a contractor to participate in the discussions so that they can give their input early on in the process to keep that project in line. At the end of the day, then, of course, the CMAR is then responsible for delivering the project within a guaranteed maximum price. But those are, as you can imagine, there's... Those are very large projects. I don't know if the question is all CMARs or some specific CMARs. I mean, that's just two very different animals, I guess.
Well, and I guess in my other field that I work in, I hear quite a bit about how contractors take advantage of cities through CMARs because it is the maximum allowable price not to exceed. So, it's usually you come in with a base price, and then cities will typically say, "Okay, we'll give you another $3 million," or whatever it is on top of what your... What the price was negotiated not to exceed. So, there's like another cost that they add on top of the CMAR not to exceed price. And those are, like I said, CMARs are usually a high-cost, high-cost projects. And so, just, you know, I wouldn't do... I wouldn't... Certainly wouldn't look at every CMAR project out there, but I think looking at a few CMAR projects here and there versus JOCs, because JOCs are low-dollar amounts in the grand scheme of things.
No, and if council was... Which I'd have no opposition to. I just want to make sure we understand they're very two, very different.
They absolutely are, and it's really... I think there's more opportunities for... I don't want to say cheating the price, but cheating the price on CMARs and versus JOCs, especially because you have a lot more hands from the contractor side. You've got a lot more hands in the pie, right? Because you'll have... You'll typically have your general contractor, and then he'll have subs underneath him that he's paying, and so what they're being paid is based off of what he's bidding on...
Is the question, is the CMAR process giving us the most effective price?
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough. We can... We'll be glad to take that, and I don't want to speak for Jennifer.
And I want to make sure if the rest of the council is okay with it, getting that direction as well.
I know, but Jennifer has to do it, so...
Because somebody obviously asked for JOCs to be on there, and so, you know, I don't want to take away from JOCs if that's what council likes or wants to have audits on, but to me, the CMAR...
I can switch those out.
Okay.
Well, I think Mr. Freeman has a question.
My question to Mr. Brady, how many CMARs do we currently have in the queue and forthcoming? I mean...
Well, so, we have the fire station 221.
Right.
Was Mesa Drive a CMAR, Beth? I know you're just waiting to jump up here, so why don't you tell me?
Yeah, that's about $25 million.
Sorry, Beth.
But I just wondering if we could not pick, Kevin, you know, Councilmember Thompson, pick one or two CMARs and see if they're...
And insert a question, too.
That was kind of my idea, was could we do just, you know, a couple of CMARs just to make sure that, you know, everybody's being held in check.
Well, I assume that just because we entered into a CMAR, that doesn't mean we advocate ourselves of any responsibility of overseeing the checks. So, there still is auditing that's going on, and it's kind of a one-off on each of these big deals. So, I think there is inherent or built into that process and a kind of an auditing function the city is scrutinizing those invoices, I assume, as they come in to make sure they're in compliance. So, that's such a... I think the opportunity for mismanagement and corrective action from an audit is more in the JOC, where it becomes this routine of, you know, money coming in, money coming out. Is it being scrutinized? Is it not? As opposed to in a CMAR, because it's such big one-off projects, I think that that scrutiny is already occurring, I believe.
Well, we currently have several projects that are CMAR. They are the larger ones, like Mr. Brady said, Mesa Drive, but it's way too early in the process to audit that because we haven't even started. We haven't seen a single invoice. You know, Greenfield Plant is under construction right now. That's $160 million project. We're about 60% complete with the project. There may be more to audit there, and I know that our auditor wants to weigh in here a little bit, but... So, there may be more to audit in Greenfield. We did just complete Single Butte Water Plant is another one we could potentially audit. We have probably a dozen or so projects like that, but many of them are just getting started in the initial phases and be way too premature for that. I requested the audit on JOC because I just want to be sure. It goes... It comes and goes very fast, and while they are contracts less than $1.5 million, there are many, and I also want to make sure our processes are in line, because, you know, we have so many things going at one time. I would like to be sure that we are really following the rules and making sure that everything's working properly. So, I request...
Kudos to you, Beth, for actually wanting an audit done on your own department, so it's pretty awesome.
Ask her, I requested both of these on here today.
Good job. So, I'll leave it up to you, Chris, how you want to handle that.
Let's do this. Can we stick with the JOC this year? And then, like I was saying, by the time we get to the end of next year, maybe we have an opportunity to pick up some projects that have been completed, maybe not $160 million project.
Well, can I talk a little bit about what it is that we do?
Yeah.
And what we have to offer here before we debate what we're getting? I just want to be really clear and transparent about what it is that we can offer as far as these two different, very different audits go. As Mr. Brady said, there's... They are two very different animals. And with the JOC process, again, not only was it requested, it's also an audit that's frequently done because of the nature of the cookie-cutter process that is then applied to all these different types of projects, and because of the volume, may not get the attention that the very large projects get in terms of oversight. And Beth wants to be sure that she's got some controls in place that are operating that enable her to sleep at night while she's dealing with bigger problems, and so that's what we're looking at there. With regard to the CMARs, there's a couple of different types of audits that can be done with those kinds of projects, and we have done minor things before, limited scope engagements when it comes to those types of things, financial... If we're just looking at financial review, that's all we're looking at, is the money coming in and out for the project. What I would say, in order to address the greater question, might be to look at the process that is in place within engineering from start to finish to manage a CMAR project, to ensure that all of the rule... to ensure that all of the rules, whether it be the Title 34 rules or any other rules that are in play, are being followed, and that she's got also a process for that. And I know it's a lot more involved, and there are a lot more people at the table in a lot of meetings and a lot of phases, and, and a lot of eyes on that process. But what we would be looking for then is where might there be a gap, where something could either slip through the cracks or maybe get out of control where you, it doesn't get picked up on until maybe it's too late. So that's what we, we look at what is compared to what the best practice might be, as opposed to a construction audit, which is then done by people who have that certification and that field of expertise, and generally those are hired out. And oftentimes, Beth will do that, hire a third-party expert to audit a particular C Mar project that's been completed to ensure that the construction criteria were met and all of the, the requirements were met, so that we know that we've built something that we can rely on. So does that?
Yes, that sums it up. And I guess I'd like to maybe to address one of your comments. You made the comment that contractors are talking about half, $2 or $3 million of kind of contingency or something at the bottom line. We don't allow that within our contracts, and it's been a little bit of a bone of contention in some ways. When we negotiate our contracts, we try to get our plans to at least the 90% stage, so there isn't a lot of unknowns that can happen. And then we try to tie those areas where we don't have it all the way through completion yet on the drawings to a certain number that we can work within so that we can keep those costs under control. We, we really do work pretty hard at that. We also remind our C Mars that they are at the design table, and I expect them to take on some of that liability because they are sitting at the design table. If, if it's something that could have reasonably been caught by the, such as a designer, which we, we recognize and we track, then we require them to come in with a cost that's at cost, no profit, because they're at the design table. So we have certain things we do to negotiate those numbers with them. There's really no project that's ever completely change order free, because we frequently get requests for scope changes, and we frequently discover unforeseen conditions that nobody would have known about. So there are always change orders, it's just we try to control them as much as we can.
So in terms of this, sorry, interrupt, in terms of this particular audit plan, I would, we can add this, not as an instead of, but as in addition to, if it's a concern that the entire council feels is worth and wants us to look at. You know, as you can see, there, there's an ambitious list of things that we're looking at, and we would need additional guidance perhaps on prioritization on, on what it is that the council really wants us to make a priority. And so is it your direction then, Mayor or counsel?
Well, I, I just think that with the amount of money that goes through C Mars, I think it's important to, to at least look at the process to make sure we don't have gaps where we can be taken advantage of, to make sure that the city's getting the best bang for its buck. And we're talking, we're not talking, you know, million-dollar projects, we're talking $175 million projects, $160 million projects, large dollar projects. And I think there needs to be some assurances in place that, that we're getting what we're paying for, and I have no doubt that Beth is doing a phenomenal job, you know, because I'm sure that Carrie banks on her doing a phenomenal job, as we do. And, but I, I think it'd be good to make sure those gap analysis is done or something to ensure that the process is, is correct.
So we'll add that to the list.
All right, well, as you know, you already have, I was, your, your plan is very ambitious to begin with, and so I was, my skepticism in the plan was that it might be too ambitious, given the number of staff that you have, and whether or not you're just biting off more than you can chew, frankly.
Well, we, we're happy to take on more staff if that's what you thought. If we could cover more ground, but no, just, just, just throw that out there. Yeah, no, and feel free to point out if there are things that we have on our list that you feel are not a priority, and, and we're happy to listen to that. But above, above that, we do automatically build in about a 20%, 20% to 25% excess capacity or, it's actually the opposite of excess capacity, excess audits over what our capacity are, because we want to be able to have the flexibility to assign the right audit of the right job at the right time, depending on what's going on. And frequently, we'll go to cross the threshold on an audit and find out that there are some moving parts at that moment in time that is not the optimal time to do that. So we'll switch to another one. We need that flexibility, so we need more projects than we can do. But this, this will definitely make it even more ambitious.
Okay. Well, thank you for doing that. Counsel, any other comments? Yes?
Timeline on the current work progress, and then the next, the next new audits, timeline on those?
Well, the timelines are a little difficult. I could tell you on the work in progress, we, the idea museum earned revenue follow-up is already complete. That just didn't make the deadline for the last Audit Finance and Enterprise Committee meeting to be presented, so that's been completed. And the other three that are on the list, I would say are anywhere from 50% to 80% maybe complete now, so we're looking at maybe within a month or so, getting the rest of those done, and then beginning on the next ones on the list, which would typically be the, the carryovers from the prior year, since those are already waiting in the queue. But there may be, for timing issues, one of the other ones that has to come first.
You, you post the recommendations online?
Correct.
Right, so that the public can see what's a result of?
Yes, yes.
The audits, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, we, we do post every report that we issue online on our website, and that includes all the management responses, which, within the management responses, are action plans for what they intend to do, and then deadlines for when they intend to do it by. And we use that as a guide for when we do our follow-ups.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Duff, anything you'd like to add?
No, I don't have anything to add, but thank you for the discussion on the JOCs and C Mars, I learned quite a bit. I have one just comment. I would like to encourage that our internal processing is as paperless as possible, that our procedures are enough where we don't store and have to remit papers. That's just a soft comment, but thank you for the work that you do, Jennifer and your team.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much, we appreciate the good work your office does.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is 2B, that's the appointment to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Luna, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Item 3 is to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Thompson, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Item 4 is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, anything you'd like to share with us?
Yes, Mayor, you and I attended the ceremony for citizenship, and we had over 150 people, I think, representing countries from all over the world, so that's always a fun activity, and they're so excited to get their, their citizenship and take pictures with us, and that's a very moving event.
Absolutely, that's, I think if you're looking for a patriotic way to spend 4th of July, you've got to have that on your bucket list, that was a great experience. Speaking of the 4th of July, I'd just like to say kudos to Steve Wright and the rest of the Mesa City staff that put on a great celebration of freedom on the 4th of July. The crowd was bigger than I'd ever seen, I think we're estimating the crowd at about 50,000 people, is that right? So it was just a phenomenal success from, from everything that I saw, so congratulations. Great place to spend the 4th.
You know, in lieu of that, Mayor, Councilmember Heredia and Duff and I were, joined you on stage, and we got to be able to throw some shirts out to the audiences, and it was well-attended, great band. It was, again, I enjoyed going to the celebration of freedom, nice event. Thank you for staff for doing that.
It was, I should report that a week ago, I was at the annual meeting of the U.S. Conference of Mayors and was happy while I was there to pick up an award for the city of Mesa for our community court program. It was acknowledged at a national level as being one of the exemplary programs, and it was just a great opportunity to brag about the good job that our, our court system's doing, so congratulations. What's that?
The Latino.
And I got a, picked up an award for the Latino Leadership Conference, I really appreciated that as well. Thank you. Anything else under reports for meetings and conferences attended, Counsel? Mr. Brady, what's our future schedule look like?
We'll see you, we'll see you on August 15th.
Okay, that's great. So by charter, we're required to have two meetings a month, and we're pushing them towards the latter part of August to give staff a little bit of time to breathe there for the summer. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Thompson, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? We will reconvene upstairs.